For the pledge. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to their oath of office stands one nation under God.
Morning, everybody. We'll call a meeting order. We do have a forum, I take a motion to approve the agenda in the next. All right, all favor I, bye. We have an agenda. Dogwood paving is starting today. We did some milling and stuff here last meeting, so I think, yeah, they were gonna try to do something early, but it looks like they're gonna start paving today and do that this week. Also, we got two districts left in Rock Run that are in northwest corner, southwest corner. That's going on. We did, uh, mentioned it a while ago, we were looking at skid loaders. We did actually end up purchasing a skid loader. It's on order and we were buying a case. Out of Arnold's in Holden. So that's coming, we gotta probably need to get a trailer. So. We're gonna need to get a trailer for that yet, and it turns out, we just bought a skid loader and a trailer in Mitchell County, but the trailer we bought might not be heavy enough for the skid loader we bought. So if there's this, uh, if we determine we need a little heavier skid loader trailer in Mitchell County, maybe Worth County can buy theirs, brand new. Haven't really used it yet, but kind of put the, put the skid loader on there and kind of weigh things. Probably should have bought a little bigger trailer than you go there, so we'll see.
Nine, ten thousand dollars.
Well, we got eight thousand pound axles on that one, which I think the, with, if you want to put attachments on the trailer and everything else, it might be a little bit overweight for what we, trailer is pretty built pretty heavy, so. Uh, we might be doing that, so just kind of a heads up, it's, you know, I think we spent, um, not, not quite fourteen thousand dollars on the trailer, so. Might be something we can get over here, it's got everything set up, it's got a panel hitch and a ball hitch, so we can use it on either, either on our dump trucks or pickup. And then I'm working on the end and report, trying to get that closed out by the fifteenth December. One thing maybe we want to talk about in future meetings, I know AJ and I kind of discussed a little bit is the paving Wheeler Wood one oh five. We don't have to talk about it right now, but I know it's, we keep pushing, I keep pushing those projects back because FM company, I mean, we want to talk about other types of funding to get those roads done, so. Anyway, that's something for, just kind of put it in the back of your head, but.
Otherwise, you're looking at twenty twenty nine.
Um, right now, I've got, Wheeler would push back that far in one oh five, I don't even think we have the money enough to put it in twenty eight, so. We have something to talk about, but I'd like to talk about it before we get to budgeting in December again, just so that we can kind of plan ahead a little bit better, so.
Make a plan, see if you can.
Because both of those roads are. Are wide enough, we could put concrete down, and Wheeler Wood being a, a detour, an emergency detour for the interstate might make sense, so anyway, just food for thought. Lot of money, but.
Apple's water dream coming on.
Yeah, yeah, so anyway.
We're checking traffic counts, and I don't agree with their traffic channels, but.
Nobody ever agrees with the traffic counts because they take them at certain parts of the year, but again, something we should look at, but I just wanted to kind of start planting a seed now, so. Otherwise, that's all I've got for you this morning.
You have any questions for Rich? We have to stamp warrants, drainage claims, is there a motion to approve those claims? I'll make a motion to approve the warrants. Okay, sorry, good, all right, any discussion on them? Here and now, in all favor I, I oppose. Or approve. Payroll claims, are motion to approve those? All in favor I, I oppose. Aries. Okay, we got two. One payroll eligibility and two salary changes. One bus driver.
Yeah, he's coming back.
Part-time bus driver, Steve Smith, and then payroll change for Ricky Anderson and Katrina Neve. They motion approve the payroll changes. I'll make a motion for them. No, certainly, yeah. All in favor I, I oppose. All right, resolution. Twenty twenty four dash forty-two, the resolution to approve dispersment of funds for American Rescue Plan Act, so a few hundred dollars left. Uh, conservation came to us and even some HVAC system replacement, Keenan's quarry. Uh, with an amount up to fifteen thousand dollars. Is there a motion to approve the spending of that money? I'll make that a motion.
No, certainly.
Okay. The roll call vote, Enos.
I.
Mark.
I.
Uh, Stone, I. Resolution is duly adopted. Jim, you may move forward.
Thank you, guys. Uh, if you would make a copy and send it my box.
I'll just scan it, please.
That would be better, yeah, thank you.
Okay, next, we're gonna jump down to Brad and Dan Saban. Morning, gentlemen.
Morning. I'm Dan Saban, originally from Manly, spent my whole life in the barrel business. Until December of last year, I was a primary owner of the Iowa Northern Railroad. Um, and Canadian National has purchased the company, just waiting for federal approval from the Surface Transportation Board. Uh, with that transaction, it's given me an opportunity to focus on some of the growth that, uh, we'd like to do in Worth County, starting with our. Manly Terminal, working on a renewable fuel refinery that will be built there hopefully by breaking down by before the end of the year. And then, um, in Manly Logistics Park. Uh, we've been working on a, on a long-term design with warehousing. Uh, a new pad for the wind turbine components that the Union Pacific brings in. And, uh, as well as some other projects, uh, some commercial projects that we want to offer as some of the, uh, industries in the area. But we, uh, we hope that we can have the funding in place for the warehouse to start next, early next year on that. It would start with about a two hundred thousand square foot warehouse with capability of growing. We see a real need in this area for a dry storage warehouse. We'd hope to do a, a free, a flash freezer warehouse in the future, but, um, it's really tough to get the packing companies to make a long-term commitment on that, so. Um, it's still in the works, but it's going to be, uh, probably about a two hundred fifty million dollar project, and I'm not quite sure where the funding will come from that. In the meantime, uh, we've acquired additional property at Manly, uh, another, uh, twenty-eight acres. And in those twenty-eight acres, we're going to do a rather substantial Manly Junction Railroad Museum and Event Center project. And we've brought, uh, some photographs and, uh, some plans on that project that I can share if you like. This project, uh, right now in phase one, it's a three-phase project, but if you can imagine, uh, going into a, a train station. Uh, with a lot of exhibits and that sort of thing, and then, uh, entering an exhibit hall, uh, two thousand square feet. And then, uh, that would be, uh, a place with, uh, a great deal of mobile exhibits. And, uh, photographs, murals, that sort of thing, and then you open a door to a concourse, and there'll be. Uh, nineteen thirty-seven and a nineteen fifty-two Rock Island passenger engine inside the building, uh, as well as a nineteen twenty-six Pullman car. We've got another half a dozen, uh, caboosees and other equipment that we want to restore. Uh, but we've really done, not had a good place inside to do this before, so we're looking forward to, uh, getting this project underway. Uh, phase one is about six point seven million. And, um, we've allocated four million of that, uh, through a charitable trust that I set up last year. Uh, that will be available, and then we're going to apply for a number of grants, uh, throughout the state economic development and some other potential grants. And that's the reason we're really here today is we'd really like to get support from the county, uh, to go forward with this and to be, be able to demonstrate to the. Uh, the grant groups that the, the county is behind our efforts and want to grow with us. And, uh, let, we, we really want this to become a part of the community so that. Can have, uh, you know, wedding receptions, or the schools can be using it for music events and this sort of thing, but we really want to. Run our position and be part of the community in the county and have, uh, something that you can be very proud of, but also a destination. For folks to come, uh, particularly those people who are very interested in the history of what the railroads did for North Iowa and Southern Minnesota. So, um, that's kind of the summary of it. I'd be glad to answer any questions you want to have or hear.
You say you've got some kind of preliminary pictures.
Sure, the, the location of it is just south of Manly Terminal, across the creek, south of the creek on sixty-five, so. What we're shooting for is kind of a park environment, if you will, with some outdoor patio and things like that, but overflow of the event center.
How many people? Capacity wise, for event center, are you thinking? I'm sorry, what kind of capacity are you thinking for?
Right now, the design is two hundred and like two hundred and twenty.
We'll have parking and then also some overflow grass parking on most events.
Sure.
We're gonna have a kitchen in it, nothing with cooking and stuff, we'll have warming, uh, some things like that. Craft area. There'll be more catering than it will be anything else on those events. We're trying to make it, gotta make it correct, and we're working very closely with Dean Snyder, new structure and new strength camp engineering still.
Well, as, as far as I'm concerned, and I think the rest of us are probably pretty close to the same page, we're always in support of economic development. Uh, we understand we need a tax base, we need something. To grow in this area, Manly Terminal, Logistics Park, that whole area, we've kind of been in support of that whole time, we'll, I think we'll continue to support it however we can. Um, so, but I mean, I know we've got. You know, Logistics Park Terminal, I believe all that's in, in, uh, TIP district or urban revitalization. I don't think we've done that property that you guys are discussing with the museum yet. Um, we have talked about doing that with the elevator property there, that's got the, the grain storage. Um, reason we haven't yet is just because once we start that, the box starts taking on using those tip dollars, so until we know there's a project that we could maybe assist with. Whether it be tax abatement, tax rebates, that kind of stuff, um, we, we wait to put that in, so when we're, if you guys are. Willing to commit and, and ready to move forward, we could probably look into that as well. Um, to, like you say, to help with some, with some tax incentives of some sort, um, on that project.
Dan failed to mention also in that, on the museum land, if you will, on that twenty-eight acres, we're gonna bring some tracks out of the yard that is existing now, and then. Have a potential, uh, customer to, uh, bring wood in by rail and then truck it to Albert Lee to their facility.
Sure.
Um, that's one of about three that we're looking at, there's also right now, we are. Transloading organic grain from truck to rail in the yard. Um, that will probably move up to this property also and probably increase with possible. Some grain storage instead of just putting it right from truck to rail, maybe put it in. More to. Convenient loading facility.
Yeah, so with that twenty acres, we're going to allocate about a third of it to the museum and the rest to be commercial property.
Sure. Yeah. And that's kind of tax base we're after. Yeah. Commercial property. You know, it's, it's a, a thing we struggle with, and that's the only situation we can do to make our. I guess tax situation better is to increase that, so, so supporting projects like this, I believe is a good thing, so. What do you guys think, any questions, comments?
Yeah. I appreciate it. I'll keep you guys updated as we go and, and the process, uh, we can send you a set of all the, we've written sand and photographs.
Yeah, if you do that, that'd be great, so that we can just have, have mine here. Um, one more question I guess I do have is, is the refinery. Um, that's looking like something that might start this fall.
Yeah, the, uh, funding is, uh, getting into place, it's got a USDA, uh, guarantee on the, on the loan, so it's going through those. Processes right now, and, uh, phase one is going to be, uh, the facility that will take, uh. Use cooking grease and other, uh, material and convert that into a, a distilled product that. Can be, uh, eventually refined into jet fuel, diesel fuel and napso. And so we've got a number of customers that would, uh, provide outtake contracts. But we want to take it slow, get the first phase done on the processing, and then we'll add the full refinery over the next few years. Then that'll be right where the herbic juice to be at Manly Terminal, which are familiar with that twenty acres there.
Yeah. Okay.
And then like Dan mentioned, we'll move, um, something like, uh, the U P or Bestis will have quite a bit of activity next year.
Yeah.
Um, so we're gonna have to move the layout area to the north in the logistics park, so. So we're trying to figure out how to grab that and best economical way to do it.
And still allow for some warehousing possible up in that same area.
Yeah, we think, uh, the warehouse is going to be a very, uh, suitable growth opportunity for all of us.
Cause what is that in the park, one twenty, hundred twenty acres?
Hundred sixty-five.
Hundred sixty-five?
Yeah, the logistics, where the loop track is now, that hundred sixty-five acres.
Awesome.
Been about a hundred and forty left with Suka taking that south part of the ground, so.
Anything else?
Well, I just excited, I've been hearing a lot about the stainless aviation fuel and that stuff every day, so. We'll keep you guys updated and then. Contact you if we need some support, letter or something, um, some grants that work.
Yeah, most likely if you're dealing with the state, you've got to get the, the local authorities to go with it.
That's what we're doing.
Yeah, and we did it, we did it with, uh, Suka, actually, when they did theirs.
Yeah.
Um, we supported that, so, um, I'll see why we would stop there, so.
Well, we appreciate you guys' support that you've given us so far with the stuff we've done. Dan being from Worth County, growing up. Our grand, my grandparents, his mom and dad, it's, uh, something that we want to continue to do. Focus in this area.
Appreciate it, so, thank you, guys.
Appreciate it.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Uh, anything I'm building and growing?
No.
Good. Uh, Water Mean Project, so just waiting on well pumps, wonder if Becco, Melissa, she on?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I am going to go to Buffalo Center tomorrow and talk about the childcare thing with the North Iowa Betterment. And then, um, this week, I'm gonna take Thursday and Friday off. So that's, that's all I have for this week.
Okey dokey. You have any questions from Melissa?
Nope.
Or no? Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Water and wastewater, I know, uh, most guys are moving on the. Stuff with Coligan, trying to get our softeners figured out out there. And then also up the West Tech, so I'm looking at the, the filter process. For the iron removal and that, so hopefully here, uh, maybe we get some answers over the next couple of weeks of what's going on, so. Continue to keep that service up and running. Um, Gartman Head Discussion. Anybody?
Or any of you guys planning on going to the W S D day next week down in Ames? Like, yeah, I can, if, if anyone does want to go, I'm probably going, I think I'm driving Sarah Gordon. I don't need his director as well, maybe, so if anyone wants to ride, just.
Was that the twenty?
Eight, I think, twenty eighth, I think it was.
I know, I got emails on, let me see if I can. Let me see, like, try to make that down there. I'll let you know. You wanna go?
I gotta.
Yeah. Sure, yeah. All right, I'll get all the gym on now.
Okay, sounds good.
The other department heads. Quiet with their sheriff out of town.
One more week.
Yep. Uh, Supervisor Weekly Reports, uh, Conversation Board, Beth has a. I gave her the link to the application, so she'll be getting that filled out, getting it to the owner's office, so once we see that, we give a point. As our, one of our kind of Conversation Board members.
And Randy said, you can stay.
Yeah, I'll go to work, okay, so we can, don't let you know both same time. Yep. Once we see Beth's application. Works for me. Uh, who do you have last big?
Partners for Children. Uh, we're down to basically all we provide for is. For de-cats, we used to provide for a lot more of them, but they're just. They're kind of, they're not asking for funds anymore. And, uh, there's only four of them that we support, I'd like to see more money go for CP. PC, which is Community Partnership for Protecting Children, but the state only lets us use ten thousand dollars in that. So, and the only other thing the, uh, Jesse brought from the state brought to our attention was. Because of how long it's taken for behavioral health and substance abuse to get going with the reorganization and everything. He said there will not be any changes to public health in this legislation coming up. Which is, you know, we knew that was part of it, we knew. That they were going to probably do some changes there on both of them, so he said it's another year out of public health as far as the changes that'll be coming from the state.
I suppose they're starting to get mental health squared away, they're trying to get mental health squared away. It's a real line on that, and then that'll be in their next year's project, so.
Yep. And she sent us the map of the territory, which you already showed us. You kind of brought it up to date there, we're gonna lose one in our. In our area, but we're picking up four, you said.
Four, six, it's gonna be fourteen counties. Eight. Eight counties.
Anywhere picking up some, so. But, uh, yeah, he doesn't, he said it's still common with public health, but he said. It's gonna drag for each, it's gonna drag to the next following legislation. So. But that's what I had, oh, I did have the mayor of Northwood talk to me. He wanted to know which one of these roads out here we were gonna use as far as an access road, the secondary roads the most. And between the vet's office and that intersection, there's a low spot in there, the city's been working with that. And they're building that up because their water stands there and, uh. You know, when they get a lot of rain, there'll be water standing there, and he's trying to work with, uh. Who's via Phil, what's the new name?
Nexus.
Nexus, yeah. And I guess they've got a, they've done, they're taking their water to the east. They're gonna try to drain this with that. And then he was wondering if Nexus and possibly the county and the city down the road could go together, hard surface that road. Coming off a hundred and five, he said, just put it out there. So, he said, cause he said, city of Northwoods doesn't have any money. It'll be a while before they get any money.
Yeah, it was worked out.
Yes. Doing new facilities or they could have too, and, yeah, we can work with them, but.
I told him I brought it to your attention.
Yeah.
Well, my job, yeah.
And I, I haven't talked to Rich about this, I thought it was talking to Lynn Butler last week about that same road access, that would probably be our primary road as well. And I told him, I'm pretty sure we would probably be blading that road and maintaining it, just because we're gonna have as much traffic as anybody too, you know. But that's what he said, that their city was working on trying to.
Yeah.
Take care of some water issues on that first stretch.
Trying to build that low spot in there, so.
I guess we can see what they come up with and try to work with them if we can, but.
Yeah. It doesn't get much maintenance now, I can tell you that.
Well, I just, they don't, they don't.
But they're gonna increase the traffic quite a bit.
Yes.
Between us.
At least the first second, and there's already quite a bit increased traffic with the new fertilizer.
With the new fertilizer plant, yes, there is, so. He just wanted to have you guys be aware of that, though. You know, cause I did say this is, it's a city road.
They get, they get road use stacks.
They get road use stacks, you know.
No less traffic on another road.
Yeah, and these roads down here.
Going south.
But are. You know, going to our old buildings, there won't be much traffic going up and down that at all.
But they are working on that water hole in there. Are they get, have you been, kind of getting it built up quite a bit, Jim?
So we, we actually use the next street over and come in on the east side of the water tower for our building.
Okay.
Just cause it's a straight shot to our building.
But for us, it's a little wider.
Yeah.
More sun.
Yeah. I said, we, we're not driving maintenance down there.
No.
We're driving pickups down.
Maintainers aren't gonna go down one too.
No.
Very good. And you won't even get a maintainer probably down the one to east of that again.
I, you might be able to there.
You may be able to work between the mailboxes.
When Jason and I were out there last week, we looked at it, and that's what, cause we talked in site layout heaven, continuing that. Road to wrap into the backside of the facility. Yeah, it could be for a smaller equipment, but I think most people would want to use the water. So.
Okay. That's, that's all I have. Okay. You have anything more? I don't have any, yeah. Yeah, well, we're almost to nine o'clock, looks like a group is here, uh, Taylor Nelson.
Hello.
Dear Taylor.
I am.
Hi, Taylor. So, Movement Political Organizer for Iowa C T, C C I, we're gonna have a presentation on a petition in support of a CO2 pipeline ordinance in Worth County. Floor is yours.
Okay, beautiful, or as well, thanks for having us, uh, we brought some materials, some examples of ordinances that we're going to have. People talk about, um, and we also have signatures from Worth County and surrounding counties, and all of these are in the box. Um, so we have, um, we have some folks that are going to speak and share their experiences, and then you can let us know if you have any questions at the end.
First, I'm gonna come around here, Anne. Pardon? Or do you want to come around here, or you go over there?
I don't know, I, I would like AJ to get a quick snack. I'll be here for everybody if I'm working on this side. Just to be kind of, yeah. So, I've got everything written out, so I don't go off track and waste your time. So my name is Anne Bokelman, I'm a resident of Hamlin Town. I am very concerned about the CO2 pipeline that Summit wants to run basically right through my backyard. By myself, my husband, the over four hundred and fifty signatures that you have, those from Worth County. Are what we're presenting, and we want the Board of Supervisors to pass the CO2 pipeline ordinance before it is too late. The signatures represent landowners, taxpayers and citizens of Worth County that are impacted by the proposed pipeline. Hazardous liquid pipelines refer, present well-founded concerns for our personal as well as the public safety. Such projects will also add enormous expense to the county damage to those roads that we were just discussing. And deplete the water that all of us depend on. The county can pass planning and zoning ordinances to address these concerns prior to the possible approval by the Iowa Utility Commission. We, the undersigned, want our county supervisors to adopt an ordinance that will protect our homes, our land and our quality of life. The pipeline will have a future impact on county income as we see a reduction in our value of our farmland and residences. The hazardous pipeline benefits the owners of Summit and none of whom live in Worth County. What do we want in the ordinance? Road damage covered in perpetuity, they're gonna go in there, rip up our gravel roads, rip up our. Blacktops, that doesn't just automatically heal itself. Minimum separation distance of a thousand feet between that pipeline and any residence or livestock operation. Houses within eighteen hundred feet should be provided a CO2 detector. Houses within eighteen hundred feet should be provided a C O two detector. We have carbon monoxide detectors in our house, we have smoke detectors, we don't have C O two detectors. Emergency responders need training, they need electric vehicles, and they need self-contained breathing apparatus. Estimated costs are three hundred and sixty thousand to equip a fire department with. Some sort of equipment that they can respond to an emergency. We need compensation for non-participating residences within a quarter mile of the pipeline to compensate for the reduction in their values. So, they're not gonna cross my land because I'm just thirteen acres taken out of the hundred and sixty that they wanna cross. They're not gonna come through my land, but I did contact a Realtor who specializes in acreages. Just to say, what's this gonna do to my property values? And she said, even a thousand feet away, it's gonna affect your valuation between fifteen and thirty percent. Another Realtor had given an actual opinion of value to another landowner in another county where. The pipeline is coming within three hundred feet of her property, fifty percent reduction. And an opinion of value, if you're not familiar with them, is like a legal document. Where they're putting their name on the line and saying, this is what's gonna do to your property values. So. If that happens, you can be assured that I will come to the county and ask for a reduction in my property taxes. And I will go up and down that pipeline, telling every single homeowner that they need to come in and get the reduction in their property values. So it will affect the counties. I'll make sure. The pipelines are classified as a hazardous liquid pipeline and under three times the pressure of a natural gas pipeline. If it ruptures, all of the oxygen in the affected area and up to one or two miles away is replaced by carbon dioxide. It is an overless, colorless deadly gas. People can't breathe it, your vehicles can't run. The rupture that happened in twenty twenty and missing fifty injured about two hundred people, many of whom were in a town a mile away. Forty-five of them had to be hospitalized. So. Right now, there are no federal standards for C O two pipelines in place, they are being worked on. Any. Thing that Summit's doing now, they're trying to be grandfathered in under no rules. The ordinance you guys pass can say that anything built in this county has to comply with the most current rules. Not necessarily something that was done in nineteen oh five. What are we giving you? Besides the signatures of all those concerned citizens, there are copies of the ordinances from other counties. Butler, Dickinson, Kemet, Emmett, Cassu, Palo Alto, Shelby, and Story Counties. We've also included some sample ordinance language you can use as a guide. Besides wanting that ordinance in place. Before they get an approval. What we heard over and over is we went from door to door knocking on doors and talking to people about this. Was the unfairness of the use of eminent domain by a private company. When I took civics, eminent domain was for public projects, airports, highways, schools. Nothing about lying in pockets. Um, many counties have filed an objection with the I U C, and we've provided a sample of the language that you can use for that as well. Our question for you, will you commit to starting the ordinance process? We know it's gonna take some time to review everything that we're giving you. But to be honest, your time is nothing compared to the hundreds of hours that the volunteers have spent going door to door. That's right. Talking with people that are affected, and even the people up here in Northwood are affected, because when they deplete that deep aquifer. There is no gas pump to refill that deep aquifer. It's, when it's gone, it's gone, and there is no way to get it back. So, we would appreciate you guys having that ordinance in place. Prior to the September twelfth meeting. And so I would expect you to remember everything I tell you. There you go.
My name is Stu Davies, I'm a current resident of Worth County. And I'm here today to ask you to pass an ordinance that includes separation distances for the dangerous C O two pipelines. I grew up and lived in Worth County for a little over thirty years, lived elsewhere for thirty years and went back. Moved back about two years ago when I retired. I currently live in Manly in a house that gets a beautiful breeze from the south most days. I spend a lot of time in my yard because I love it there and because I've always loved being outside. It's very peaceful in my backyard with, especially with that breeze. Growing up, I lived on an acreage west of Manly where my sisters and I rode our horses, and where I built stick forts in the grove. And where my parents Judy and Wally Davies still live. I love that place and the peacefulness of it. My parents always have a garden and spend lots of time outside. I hope to live there again someday to turn the hayfield into prairie. And create a welcome space for wildlife species in addition to the turkeys and foxes that are already there now. This pipeline threatens all of that. If it's built as proposed, I'm in danger if it ruptures, as are my parents. Because that southern breeze will carry that C O two right to me and to them. I'm about. Uh, my, a little more than a mile from three fiftieth. I don't feel comfortable with my parents living on their acreage if it's, uh, if there's gonna be a pipeline about a mi- mile away from them. They live just on the north side of Highway Nine, west of Manly. For fear of their safety, and I won't feel safe living there myself, let alone in my current house. There are three serious threats if this pipeline is built and long-term impacts to the resources we rely on. Water is one example. These pipelines will, will require a tremendous amount of pressure. And the press pressurization process will need to be cooled by water. The pipeline is projected to use three point three billion gallons of water per year, and that water's gonna be coming our, out of our aquifers. This is not an unlimited resource. The pipeline threatens to contaminate our waterways should it rupture, but if it take, if it's taking waters from our aquifers. It also means that we may be forced with water shortages, having to dig new or deeper wells. As is already happening around Hamlin Town because of the extractions by Poet, we may even need to ration water in the future. Summit has been quietly seeking D N R water permits through separate. L L Cs, they have submitted thirteen separate requests so far, despite the fact that there have been no environmental impact studies conducted. We're just coming out of a four-year drought and some, Summit is threatening to put. Us in danger of future water shortages by using up our precious resources. These pipelines are a danger to all of us. I see it as your job as supervisors to do what's right to protect the people of Worth County. People you may have grown up with and people you know. Will you commit to working on passing an ordinance that include, includes separation distances? Now, in addition, this is the Manly signal from last week, Thursday the fifth week. This little girl right here is Ella Coons. She lives on three hundred and fiftieth street, just south of Manly, the, the blue house you can see from the highway, that's her house. Her parents are Kenny and Lexi Coons. Lexi is the daughter of Dale and Carol Henninger who live in Manly. Kenny is the son of Natalie and Scott Coons. Natalie's my sister, daughter of Judy and Wally Davies. Scott Coons, you may recognize that name. Uh, he is the son of Jerry Coons, who was the longtime government. Uh, teacher at North Central School. So if you went to North Central before nineteen ninety when he retired. You took his government class. This is his great granddaughter. She lives across the road from where this pipeline is gonna be. Thank you.
Hello. Forgive me for not standing. My name is Steve Angersall, and I live near Plymouth. And I'm an impacted landowner, and I am against this carbon pipeline. Summit's proposed hazardous pipeline would go. Within a few yards of my house, according to her map. I'm asking you guys. To pass ordinances for safety regulations to protect people, livestock, and pets. From this pipeline. I've lived in Worth County forty or fifty years, give or take, I suppose. I grew up on a farm north of Plymouth. Where we had a variety of livestock, now I live on an acreage about a mile south of where I grew up. It's my own small piece of paradise, and I'd like to keep it. Summit's trying to run this poisonous pipeline almost underneath of my house. They wanna steal our land, and they wanna take our groundwater, or, and I think it's wrong. But not just for my lifetime, but the lifetime of the earth, the lifetime of my property, now once Summit gets my lease. If they force me into this, they can give my. Right away to anybody they want to, which is completely wrong. Uh, and it's, and it seems to me that this is for. To make money for themselves on the taxpayers' dollars. Should be used for our county roads and our school systems. They're gonna tear up and displace our land, dig it up, and then. They're not gonna repair it when they replace it. I've seen every pipeline that goes through say they'll do this, but they. Take a bulldozer and shove the crap back over top of your ground, any. Anyone I've ever witnessed, and it's been a few. You don't have to be an engineer or a chemist or a scientist to know that this is a disastrous plan, it's been a proven disaster. We've seen a pipeline fail in Mississippi and elsewhere, I should add. The consequences are dire. Uh, pipelines are extremely dangerous, and Summit's had no experience with them, another thing. The pipelines pressurized, as we all stated, at three times the pressure of natural gas. But not if, but when there is a rupture, it's already proven. Blooms can travel for. Miles in minutes. In fact, I think they were affected eighteen miles in one of the disasters. This C O two will settle in the low-lying areas, it'll follow the low-lying areas. Depending on which way the wind is blowing, it could affect people all over. Combustion engines won't run, won't start, emergency vehicles can't get there. Uh, you would suffocate. The closer the pipeline is to you, I would say the more risk there is. And it'd take a lot of time for this carbon dioxide to disperse after rupture. The time, of course, would depend on how big the pipelines are and how much, how much the wind is blowing and weather. Things like that, and the topography of our ground. Like I say, if you do live in the hollow, your chances would be limited. And so I would like to ask you guys for some control. Um, well, um. What we can control is making sure that this pipeline has a minimum separation distance from people, property, schools, hospitals. And areas of environmental concerns. So I'm asking you guys to stand with me and, uh. Four to five hundred people in Worth County that signed, and a lot more in other counties right across the road that. Um. Feel we need. Good safety regulations, and that's what I'm asking. And I thank you for your time.
Morning. My name is Wendy Heneman. Yeah, I have something written up, but I think it's, um, pretty much the bases have been touched already, so I'm gonna sort of wing it. My husband and I have lived out there for about thirty-five years. We live in the southeast corner of Worth County. Uh, we live on Warbler Avenue about, uh, four hundred foot from where the proposed pipeline is going to go. We've worked for many years. Make our home our safe haven. Our family has a saying, no matter where you roam, the farm is always home. They're about to take that away from us. Am I supposed to let my grandkids play in the yard? Knowing there could be imminent danger. I'm gonna keep using that word imminent, cause we're gonna get back to that. I think that they're gonna come in and to, and. Give retribution to the farmers, the acreage owners are out. You're in the danger zone, you get nothing for it. But a carbon di- dioxide detector in your home, that's great. By the time that thing goes off, how are you gonna get out of there? Are the counties gonna be responsible for evacuating all of us? It isn't gonna be an evacuation, it's gonna be a recovery effort, I think we all know that. Um, I'm asking you. To write some sort of ordinances. Not just to protect us, but to protect the firemen. But protect the emergency workers. And to keep Worth County. The top of Iowa. I think the entire room in here knows that this company is gonna take Iowa, the entire state, down a notch or two. And I think it's very wrong that this man can come in and his company. And put us all at risk. And there's absolutely nothing we can do about it, so I think we need to all keep plugging away. Starting with Worth County. Thank you.
Um, I'm Roxanne Jackson. Lived my entire life in Worth County. I am the fourth house east of the ethanol. I have drove every road. From sixty-five to the county line. Between I thirty-five. And sixty-five. I have talked to every farmer there that would answer the door. I have talked to every acreage owner. I had one person refuse to sign the petition because they wanted to stay in the truck. I had three places I never found anybody home. Otherwise, ninety-nine percent of the dots on your map. Don't want this. I'm gonna do a quick overview of facts because the presentation people here have done a wonderful job. Fact, Summit has never built a pipeline. Fact. Summit refuses to release a bloom study citing safety issues and terrorism concern. Terrorism concerns, they wanna put something in, a terrorist could blow up and you're back in. Thanks. Summit has refused to list investors, we don't know if they have foreign investor. Summit Pipeline can be sold at any time to anyone. Summit wants to put this at three foot depth. Frost in North Iowa is six foot. The Pipeline Hazardous Safety Administration will not release a guideline for C O two pipelines until the fall of this year. Summit should be required to wait until the study is released and not grandfathered in. Summit Pipeline with its ethanol plants will use thirteen point five. Billion gallons of water annually. It takes three gallons of water to make a gallon of ethanol and an additional one point five gallons. To use the C O two pipeline. Which is four point zero five gallons per of our water from our aquifer lining. A private company's pot. Plant in Hamlin Town makes eighty million gallons of ethanol annually, which requires two hundred and forty million gallons of water. It will need another eighty-four million gallons to utilize the C O two pipeline. That's three hundred and twenty-four million gallons total per year at that plant. That plant is one of thirty-one in Iowa. It will use fifty-one percent of all water used in a ten-mile radius. That's Clear Lake, Joyce, Hamlin Town, fertile. Everybody's water combined, they're using fifty-one percent of. Five acreages, I went around and I got people's names and I got people to sign. Five neighbors of mine that I had not previously talked to. Put in new wells since two thousand and four. When poet winning. Three east, within a mile and a half, to west, within a mile and a half. The city of Hamlin Town lowered their well depth by a hundred foot this spring because they were sucking sand. When our aquifer is gone, we will have no water. The D N R is responsible to protect Iowa's groundwater resources. It says, in the best interest and welfare of the people of Iowa, Iowa Code Section four five B dot. Two six two, based on beneficial use and not the quantity. The last study in Iowa Aquifers was done in two thousand and seven. C O two is an infixient, it is colorless, it is odorless, and it is one and a half times heavier than air. The United States presently has five thousand three hundred miles of C O two pipeline. All presently located in southern states. It is pressurized at three times the rate of natural gas, twenty-one hundred P S I. And C O two can travel with that pressure, one thousand three hundred feet in four minutes. Four minutes. Summit says it can shut down a pipeline in two minutes. Northern Natural Gas says that not in reality and report. Northern Natural Gas says that not in reality and reported history, minimum time would be sixty minutes. And that was published in the Pipeline Safety Trust, March twenty-seventh of this year. Ethanol plants create CO2 in two ways. First from the fermentation of corn, second from the energy required to run the plant. Summit would capture CO2 from only one of these processes, capturing only point two of the CO2 produced by each plant. And eighty percent of the sequestered projects for CO2 have failed to do what they said. Navigator Pipeline did a plume study. They used an eight-inch pipe with a burst. It had a kill zone of one thousand eight hundred feet. That's quarter mile. If in the winter time, because of humidity levels and pressures, that kill zone would be three thousand six hundred feet or a half a mile. Navigator termed to anyone within one thousand one hundred feet of the pipeline would be in immediate danger without breathing equipment. We're asking for a minimum of a thousand feet from somebody's home and this says if at least if you don't have a breathing apparatus, you have four minutes to run because your car's not going. Summit Pipeline will devaluate loaners and adjacent landowner property values, estimates fifteen to thirty percent and up to fifty percent depending on location. We will request our property taxes to be lowered. I am within the dotted area of that map. I got three certified notifications from Summit. The minute I got that notification, according to the real estate gurus, I fell into this lower property range. February or March, when I first heard about this, we came to the first meeting where Summit presented. Summit didn't say any of these things. And and that's up to them. When I walked out of this meeting, I went Summit wants to contaminate my air. Summit wants to take my water. And Summit wants to ruin where I live. That was in February. We're now in August. None of those things changed for me. I would go a step further because I'm kind of a radical lady and I would say to you, please pass an ordinance. Better yet, pass a year moratorium. Say, do not build this until you can answer our questions. I gave the supervisors the map with the dots. You're basically going to make the bottom three miles of Worth County uninhabitable without some way to help us stop this pipeline. Thank you. Sorry, bitch, Jack.
None of us could even put our houses on the market right now if we wanted to get the hell out of Dodge. Because per the realtor, once we knew about it, we'd have to disclose it. And I'm sorry, as somebody who moved back here and found an acreage and found what we wanted in Worth County, I wouldn't buy here. No way in hell.
If I can add one more thing and I'm sorry, I meant to say it earlier. Tax preparer came around and he raised my valuation fifty-five thousand dollars last year.
Mine raised quite a bit too, but I believe it'll be going a lot lower now.
Well, and and it takes money and we all know it takes money, so be it. I do not know what my acreage is worth because my acreage is not for sale. I will die there or go to the nursing home. It's simply the way it is. I will not want my grandchildren to live there if this pipeline goes in. The number fifteen percent or thirty percent or fifty percent is all relative. I will estimate my acreage is worth ninety, sorry, three hundred thousand dollars. At fifteen percent, I lost forty-five thousand dollars the day they mailed me that letter. At thirty percent, I lost ninety thousand dollars the day they mailed me that letter. At fifty percent, I lost a hundred and fifty. I'm retired. That's my asset. A private corporation with undisclosed backers should not be able to ross the bottom third of Worth County.
So we've had more than four hundred and sixty signatures from people in Worth County and more from surrounding counties, brings in to at least five hundred. So what we want to know is will you commit to starting this ordinance process today?
I think we need to read through these. I've seen a few of them get emailed to me. I'm sure we probably all have. And we'll have to, if we would decide to go this direction, run it through our county attorney to make sure that it's works for us. Okay, because these counties are similar size. Everything's probably been looked at by their county attorneys as well, but that's just something we have to do. So a decision today can't be made. It will be up for discussion next week and then maybe we can make a decision then.
Great. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you, everybody.
We can head out, y'all. Appreciate it.
I got three, I got the, yeah. Way more work than what you think.
Oh, your brother's funeral reunion.
We just purchased a grandma farm that is pre-erded and had lived on since nineteen sixty. We did that on August. And my father. My father-in-law, yes, after the ethanol plant was built, you have to go down in additional a hundred or a hundred and fifty feet. I have record of that and I didn't bring him. I didn't know when I put my signature on there, but yeah, our will.
I think we've slowed up a little bit. I think we fulfilled our agenda, guys.
Is there anything in the future?
Yeah, I would put pipeline ordinance, discussion and possible action. We'll let, we'll get the stuff to Jeff and let him take a look at. Okay, so I'll personally deliver it to him. See how that goes. And also I'm afraid to deliver this one, the letter to Ivy Utilities Board as well. Okay. And have him make that for us and we can decide on that next week. So I guess that'd be another one to put on is Ivy Utilities Objection Letter.
I'm not as concerned about that. If you can get it done, that's fine. When we've done it through the ISA, how many we've all supported it.
Yeah, yeah. So we can, if we just put one with our name on it personally.
Yeah.
More or nothing, so.
No.
Otherwise, I don't know of anything else that needs to go on right now. You guys.
I'll make a motion during.
All right, there's a motion. There's a second. I will second that. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both meetings adjourned.